Hello, this is the Green Corn Rebellion Show. I'm Gregory Harden the second and today I'm here with Joshua Segal. Who is currently a city councillor in Allentown, Pennsylvania and is a candidate for the State House in District twenty-two in Pennsylvania. How are you doing today?
I'm awesome, feeling good.
That's good. Um, so um, also in honor of me interviewing someone from Pennsylvania. I am wearing my Breaking Benjamin shirt, because Breaking Benjamin is from Pennsylvania. That was something that I thought of last minute. It was just sitting there and I was like, Pennsylvania or that one, alright. Yeah, I'm not sure what part of Pennsylvania, but they're from Pennsylvania. I know that much.
As long as they're from here, that's fine.
Whoa, 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 stop what you're doing. Okay, if you like this video and you like the other content on my channel, please hit the like button on this video. Also, go hit subscribe like right now. And also, when you hit subscribe, click the bell so you can get notifications whenever I put out a new video. So, thanks. Alright, enjoy the rest of the video. Um, so first question I have here is where are you from and where did you grow up?
Uh, pretty much from the Lehigh Valley. Um, so I grew up mostly in Bethlehem and then Phillipsburg, which is actually across the river in New Jersey. So my parents got divorced when I was in, uh, when I was in the fifth grade. Dad went out to Lehigh Valley, Bethlehem, uh, and my mom stayed in Jersey. And so I kind of split my time between the two houses. But I'm pretty much in the Lehigh Valley. It's where I'm from, um, pretty much born and raised. Uh, I went away for school, but I always knew I would come back. I really love it here. It's, it's like an amazing place, a little bit of everything. Got some big cities, got some rural areas. There's really good hiking and trails all around. So it's, it's a good mixture. I, I love it here. Good place to like start a family. So, uh, that's where I was born and raised and, um, pretty much intend to stay. So.
That's good. Um, so what made you run for city council originally? And how old were you whenever you decided to do that? You were like twenty-four at the time, right?
Yeah, twenty-four, a lot. I was twenty-five when I got, um, I was twenty-five when I got elected, twenty-six when I got inaugurated. But, uh, yeah, for me, like, politics has always been very personal. I think it is for a lot of individuals, but uh, what got me into politics in the first place, and I had actually run for mayor in twenty seventeen. Um, and I was just like twenty-two at the time. The former mayor was under federal investigation for pay-to-play. He's now in prison. Uh, and I didn't really see like a progressive candidate kind of stepping up with like a vision for the city. So I've always really loved municipal politics. Uh, I actually think it's, it's where you can get a lot of really interesting and innovative stuff done. There's just really cool, whether it's transportation, infrastructure, like housing, um, you know, bike lanes. There's just a lot of really neat policy wonkish stuff that you can do at the local level. Um, and you know, like, especially like in the era of gridlock. I really think like cities have kind of become this like laboratory of democracy. You look around the country and there's just really interesting stuff being done in different cities. You know, like Seattle has these voter vouchers that are like changing the way we interact with politicians and fund grassroots campaigns. You know, uh, some studies have done really interesting like housing bonds where they're building like thousands of new housing units to alleviate like stress on renters. So uh, that's why I wanted to get involved at municipal level. I just think there's a lot of really just innovative, awesome, like progressive stuff that you can do um, to transform people's lives. Um, and I think on a bigger note, like for me, politics personally because of my family. So I always knew I wanted to go into public service. You know, my, my dad, um, you know, came out to me when I was in the fifth grade. That's why my parents got divorced. And my sister is a trans woman. So for me, like, politics was always about fighting for the marginalized, being a voice for the voiceless. Um, and you know, and, and really, you know, sort of stepping up and, and fighting for people that, you know, may not necessarily have champions or allies on their side. Uh, or as many as they should and sort of trying to be that voice for justice and equity. Um, and you know, in Allentown, uh, i- it's their largest state. So like what we do here matters, like it has ripple effects and you know, we have a chance to be a leader. Um, and, and lead by example and maybe, you know, compel other municipalities to take action. So that's, that's why I ran. That's what I've, I've been working on at the local level. Um, for the last three years.
Alright, um, and what made you run for state representative?
Well, so there's a lot of problems in Allentown that are just frankly, you know, that we just can't fix at the local level that require like really audacious like state level action. So, you know, like education, for example, is a big problem in Pennsylvania. We have one of the most, uh, you know, Allentown itself is one of those underfunded school districts in the country, um, and certainly at the top in the state. And unfortunately, there's just at the local level, we're pretty much, our hands are tied. Uh, there's not much we can do to fix the inequity in the school district. That really requires state action. Um, so for example, like Pennsylvania is fiftieth in the country for state share of public education funding. So on average, Pennsylvania contributes less than forty-five percent of a local school district's budget. And so when you're rural school district or you're an urban school district like Allentown where you have either distressed homes or particularly low property values or you have like a disproportionate share of low income residents, it's very hard to, to fund your school district on just local property tax. And so kids suffer. And as a result of that, you know, our mileage rate is significantly higher than that of surrounding communities. So it costs a lot more to live in Allentown, which distresses a lot of our, you know, it eats up a lot of the, the income of our, our, our residents, which makes it harder for them to live, whether it be, you know, just younger homeowners or, or seniors on a fixed income. Um, so there's a lot of things that we have to do better at the state level that I can't fix at the local level. And unfortunately, you know, Pennsylvania for the last twenty years has had a sort of right wing Republican legislator that has just said no to everything. And so, you know, people in Allentown and people across Pennsylvania are, are in pain. Uh, and it's really no different than I think any other state in the country. Uh, you know, it, it's getting expensive to live. We actually have the highest rent-to-income ratio of any city in the country. And, you know, we're, we're a high share of renters. So the city is about sixty-seven percent rental at this point. So there are things we have to do that can only come from the state level where we can more like effectively raise resources, where we can distribute them in a more equitable manner. So at the state, like, you know, fair funding, paid family leave, paid sick leave, um, uh, generational investment in affordable housing, but also quality housing. There's a really great bill in the Pennsylvania legislature right now called Whole Home Repairs. Uh, that will give fifty thousand dollars to qualifying homeowners to fix up their homes, weatherize them, make them more energy efficient. Uh, which will not only reduce our carbon footprint, but save a lot of working class folks hundreds and thou-, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on energy costs, utility costs. So there's, there's, there's a need for bold change at the state level and this district that I'm running in is an open seat. So there's no incumbent. So it is a chance for Allentown to get a new representative, to send somebody who's going to have the energy and passion to go to Harrisburg and really change the narrative. Um, and we have a chance in Pennsylvania now to actually flip the legislator. And so we have an ability to roll back twenty years of just dysfunction and neglect and actually start taking care of people. And so that's why I'm running, because there's an actual chance that in the next couple of years, we can actually start doing things in Pennsylvania and stop playing defense, which is really what we've been at for, for twenty, twenty-five years.
Alright, um, um, can you tell me about some of the accomplishments that you've had or been a part of while being in the city council in Allentown?
Yeah, um, so just two months ago, we became the third municipality in Pennsylvania to offer gender neutral paid, uh, family leave to our employees. So Pittsburgh and Montgomery County were the only two municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania that had offered that policy. And so, um, I used, I took their ordinance, I, I, you know, I fit, fitted to Allentown and we joined them two months ago unanimously, we passed paid, uh, new gender neutral paid family leave for our city employees. Which I was really proud of. So that was like an example for me of like where Allentown could be a leader. Um, and sort of raising the standard for how we take care of people. Um, and, and making sure that we treat our employees really well and, and also offer a policy that I think everyone should offer. Um, we're also right now in the process of trying to bring our city garage back in house. So about twenty years ago, the city of Allentown privatized its garage. Um, and I'm a big opponent of privatizing government services. I don't think we should be adding profit margin or profit, you know, motive to core municipal functions. Uh, so twenty years ago, we outsourced our garage to a private company. And as anyone would have expected, they've reduced wages, they've cut corners, they've tried to cut costs. And as a result of it, our city vehicle fleet has suffered. So our fire trucks don't get fixed on time. Our city ambulances sometimes are backed up. There's just so many maintenance errors that have accumulated. Uh, and that's a result of bad decision-making, you know, like there was desire to privatize it. And as a result of it, we don't offer competitive wages. So we really recruit or hire, you know, really skilled mechanics. They leave to work elsewhere as they should, because they're not getting what they worked or what they deserve. And so that's really affecting our ability to just like keep people safe. Like, you know, we can't have fire trucks that physically can't drive. Um, you know, we can't have brakes on our cars failing and, you know, like putting the city in a place where it could be liable for, for damages or, you know, in a more serious instance, like not being able to save someone's life because a fire truck breaks down on the scene or we don't have a ladder truck for a larger building. Um, so I'm hoping before I leave council that we'll be able to formalize that and bring it back in-house. Our garage is represented by SDIU. And so, you know, I've been standing strong with organized labor. They're trying to make sure that we treat our, our employees well and, and get them out of a situation where, you know, their salaries are being cut and they're being treated poorly. Uh, we're also working on comprehensive rezone right now. So again, like super nuanced, that's municipal policy. We are working on rezoning our city. So it's more friendly to different types of housing units. So accessory dwelling units, micro units. Things were like, you know, w- we can create more housing opportunities, which will hopefully bring down the costs for local residents. Um, so I've been on council for three years and I, I think I've had a pretty, uh, pretty strong impact on, on legislation. I've been able to do a lot in a little bit of time. My last goal before I leave is to pass earned paid sick leave. So there's only two municipalities in PA that offer that. That's Pittsburgh and Philly. We have our own health bureaus. We can also sort of regulate, we can do it under the guise of infectious diseases. So what I want to do is make sure that for, um, based in Pittsburgh and Philly is the same thing I want to do here. For every forty hours worked, you earn an hour of paid time off. So if you have to go to the doctor or you take your kid to the doctor, you have that ability. And we can actually do that, not just for municipal employees, um, but for private employees as well within the city of Allentown. And so uh, that's another thing I'm, I'm leading the charge on and I'm hoping to bring that up before I leave council, um, you know, next year presumptively. So like I said, trying to use municipal government in the most innovative and like audacious way possible to just make the world just a little more just and fair in the city.
That's good. Um, yeah, hearing about some of the things that you're passing in your city kind of reminds me about how, and I'm sure the Republican legislature, whenever there was a Republican governor in Pennsylvania, I'm pretty sure they probably did stuff like this too. Where, um, our legislature, a few years ago, they passed a law that said municipalities couldn't raise the minimum wage. Or, yeah, go ahead.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, that's another thing. Equal preemption is, in Pennsylvania is brutal.
Yeah, and what else? They also passed, uh, uh, stay with me now, it's a fracking ban ban. So cities and counties can't ban fracking within their municipalities. Yeah, and what are some of the other ones that they had? There's a few other ones that are similar to that, that stops cities from being able, oh, they also recently passed a, uh, ban on mask mandates for schools. So the school districts, they couldn't implement their own mask mandates this year, um, uh, for school. Um, I don't think they did it for municipalities though, but they did it for the schools. I know that much, but yeah.
I always love Republicans or local control until local control looks like something they don't like. So it's the same here in Pennsylvania. We have municipal preemption on minimum wage, which is something I think should be lifted. I, you know, I think it should be up to cities and counties to set their local wage as they see fit. Um, you know, obviously in Philly, it should probably be much higher than it is in Allentown, but it should be up to council and the mayor to decide, you know, what it needs to be. We actually have something similar. They're trying to preempt municipalities from uh, regulating what type of like energy hookup you can have. So obviously Pennsylvania is a big natural gas state. They want to prohibit municipalities from trying to like limit one's ability to hook up to natural gas. And instead like, you know, like we wanted to shift people to like different forms of energy. So the same thing here, like they are trying to find ways to basically just hamstring cities and counties from doing what is like, you know, best for their local residents. Uh, firearms is another one, like cities in Pennsylvania can't pass like basic firearm regulations, um, about like, you know, the transit of weapons. So we just, there's little things that like they restrict here. It's, you know, all over the place. Like when you have these really conservative legislators, so I like preemption should just be lifted. Like I think it's up to local areas to do what they want. Um, you know, so far as they're not violating, you know, people's constitutional rights. Like obviously we don't want cities to turn around. They have, you know, super, you know, right wing councils or, or, you know, like and prohibit freedom or whatever. But obviously like, yeah, it's a, it's a big problem in Pennsylvania. Preempt municipal preemption is, is pretty rough here.
Yeah, um, it's, it's pretty wild. I remember, there's some other crazier ones. I want to say there was one where they banned one's ability to, I don't know if this is like an actual law or talked about, but like they banned the ability to collect your own rainwater or something like that. I don't know. Something akin to that or something. And then there was also um, if you wanted to hook up your house to solar panels and be off the grid, they made it to where you'd have to pay a fine for that. So instead of not paying for electricity, because you'd be off the grid with your solar panels, they would make you pay into, you know, I don't know who you would be paying to, but they would ma- essentially make you have a fine for it.
Right.
Yeah, and there's just all a bunch of crazy, crazy stuff that they've done.
Yeah.
I just, yeah. Yeah, and but yeah, um, let's see. Um, so on your website, you say that you're wanting to improve public education. Uh, tell me about some of the problems that are going on within the public education system and tell me about some of the things you're wanting to do to fix them.
Yeah, so obviously the first one I had alluded to earlier is the state of our fair funding formula. So, um, eight years ago, when Tom Wolfe came into office, we didn't even have a fair funding formula. So we were one of the few states in the country that didn't take into consideration things like local property tax burn, uh, you know, percentage of students that are learning English for the first time. Percentage of students with special needs, um, you know, so all those things require like more resources and th- those individual pupils are more expensive. Uh, because they need additional support services. So we didn't even have a fair funding formula at one time. Um, the issue was that the fair funding formula only applies to fourteen percent of all basic education funding. So even though we have this fair funding formula, these gross inequities still exist because a majority of the education funding is not going through it. And so like Allentown, for example, loses about a hundred million dollars a year. That's how much more money we should get from the state. But we don't as a result of the way we fund our fair funding formula. So that's one of the things we have to fix right away is make sure that all basic education funding goes through that fair funding formula. Um, so that not just cities like Allentown, but Philly and Wilkes-Barre and Scranton. Um, you know, and then rural school districts as well, where they have like limited ability to raise local revenue, they get their fair share. Like I said, we're fiftieth out of the country in local share of public education funding. So that's the other thing is the state needs to step up and contribute more of local school districts budgets, um, especially in municipalities where they just don't have, you know, the local property tax capacity to sustain it. Um, so we, we also have the, the biggest gap between the wealthiest and poorest school districts in the country. So Pennsylvania is just sort of like ground zero for how to not fund public education and, and take care of kids. Um, the other things I, I, I want to work on are universal pre-K. Um, so if they're not going to do it and build back better and the federal government won't through, I think that it's up to states to step up and fill that gap. Uh, you know, ninety percent of a kid's brain is developed before they're three years old. So pre-K is like one of the best investments we can make in a kid's long-term success. And it's not just like educational, it's like just socio, like socially, uh, sociological, like kids who go to pre-K just like have better relationships, they're better at conflict resolution, they live better lives, like this is just like, there's a moral aspect to pre-K education. Like when kids go to pre-K, their lives are just like demonstrably better. Um, like they just have better opportunities and better outcomes. And we should want, you know, the best for our kids, especially young kids who, you know, like pre-K is like the really make or break for them, especially on reading. Uh, Allentown has a big problem with reading comprehension. So, you know, like we know that if you're not reading proficient by third grade, like from first to third, you're learning to read and after that it's actually reading to learn. So when a kid falls behind early, they often don't catch up. And so that's a lifelong sort of like inhibitor to success. Uh, so that's the basic education part of it, the K through twelve that we have to work on is universal pre-K and fixing the fair funding formula. Um, the other aspect of it is the post like K through twelve. So there's a policy, there's a, there's a bill in Pennsylvania called the Pennsylvania Promise, which would offer tuition-free community colleges and four-year universities in Pennsylvania to any family making less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. And I think that covers approximately ninety percent of Pennsylvania families. It's, it's the vast majority of the kids in the state would benefit from it. Um, and we have one of the highest, uh, you know, debt burdens of, of any state in the country. Our, our public universities are particularly expensive. Uh, and their enrollment is declining. And so a fa- a function of that is that it's just too expensive to go to college in Pennsylvania, as it is most places. Um, so, and we also have a huge exodus of, you know, like young people. Pennsylvania is only really growing because seniors are moving, like a lot of seniors are moving into the state. We don't tax social security. So a lot of our population growth is people over sixty-five, uh, which is not sustainable. Like you want to attract young people. You want to attract, you know, uh, you know, a new generation and, um, the other issue is that in Pennsylvania, there's a racial aspect to it too, when it comes to like colleges. And that is that, uh, you know, our public education at the, our like public colleges used to be a great equalizer. It used to be that there was, um, you know, that no matter what income strategy you came from, like you would do well when you graduated from our universities. We have a really high debt ratio and debt burden just among students of color who attend our, our, our four-year colleges and universities. So there's a racial equity aspect to this, as there is just like, uh, it's good for like the economy and it's good for the state. Like we want young people to come to Pennsylvania. Um, because you can, uh, you know, get a quality education. So on the education front, that's what I'm looking to do. I, it's basically a cradle to career. Is, you know, universal pre-K, fully funding our K through twelve, and then making sure that if you want to go to college or VOTech or community college, you should not have to worry about tuition. That should be taken care of by the state. Um, you know, so we can focus our grants and our assistance on other things like housing and books, which are another significant share of like attending school. Uh, so that, that's, that's, that's what I want to do in terms of like educational justice. Um, and I think that, you know, again, like states have a really great opportunity here to sort of fill the gap. Because it just doesn't look like unfortunately, Build Back Better is going to happen anytime soon. And so there's all this pain and anguish it was supposed to alleviate. I mean, you know, paid family leave was in there. Universal pre-K was in there, free community college was in there. So there's a chance here for Pennsylvania, especially if we hold the governor's mansion and flip the legislator, um, to kind of do Build Back Better here in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, um, that phrase you used, cradle to career. Did you come up with that or did someone, have you heard that out somewhere else?
I've heard that quite a bit. I've heard the
I've never heard that before. I like that. I'm going to start using that because that's, that's a good one.
I heard it. I read it somewhere. I think I, I was at a, like a rally for education funding and I think one of our local activists used it. And I just, I thought it was really like awesome too. I think it just conveys like what we want to do. So you, I think, I, I think it sounds pretty cool. It's rolls off the tongue. And I think it does tell people like, hey, it really is like from the minute a kid is born to the minute they choose their profession, um, we ought to be in, have their back.
Yeah, um, so what was the other thing? Oh yeah. So you said there's a bill in the legislature called Pennsylvania's Promise. And so we have a thing like that in Oklahoma called Oklahoma's Promise, but it's for whenever I was younger, it was for students whose families make fifty thousand or less. They brought it up to sixty thousand or less. But now, um, some of us are talking about raising it the limit to be all kids or at least raising it to be something more like a hundred thousand a year or something like that, because I think, I don't know what it is. I don't remember the specific number, but sixty thousand, I still don't think, I think that still technically covers most families in Oklahoma. Um, but, you know, not most families and most kids end up going to the colleges and then um, also there's like a fair amount of people whose families make more than sixty thousand. Like I couldn't, I couldn't get Oklahoma's Promise whenever I was in high school, because my parents or my dad made more than the fifty thousand. Um, and so what did you say? The one in Pennsylvania was a hundred and twenty thousand a year?
I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, and that's just with, I, I personally, like when it comes to programs like that, I'm more of a universalist. Like I think
Yeah, me too.
Quite everybody like, I, it's like, I don't, like, I don't really, for me, I don't care. Like if your parents make three hundred thousand dollars, I still think you have the right to go to college and it shouldn't cost your family. Like because it winds people against each other. We create that like class battle, like that inter-class warfare where it's like, well, you know, I'm slightly upper middle class and I don't, you know, but my kids aren't getting something and I, we don't, why am I paying into something that I don't get to benefit from. I think, you know, like whether your parents are super wealthy or super poor, I think like education is education and like everybody should benefit from it. It's, it's kind of like, uh, like social security. Like I, I've never thought we should like, you know, social security is universal and I don't care if you make a hundred million dollars a year. I still think you're entitled to some social security. I think that we should raise, you know, like the income cap on social security over the twenty thousand, uh, you know, so that people who make more equitably pay into it. But at the end of the day, like I'm not, I don't like means testing things. Like that's just what the bill says, you know, but I would I would make it universal. Like, because to be honest, there's not that many families in Pennsylvania really that I think are over it. But to be frank, why should they be excluded? Like their kids deserve an education, like else. And at the end of the day, like, you know, maybe some of those kids, obviously, you know, not everybody goes to college and not everybody goes to a public university. Like, you know, that maybe some of those kids choose to go to a state affiliated school, uh, or, or, you know, private university. And if they want to go to temple, that's their prerogative and we're not going to pay for that. But uh, you know, like the, go to a public's, public college should, you know, like, it's a state resource. It's there for people. It shouldn't be a cost burden. So
Yeah, and another thing I feel like people forget is, um, the parents of uh, the wealthy parents of children are not necessarily obligated to pay for their children's college.
Right.
So if that's the case, why would we just make that assumption that all kids of wealthy people are going to have their college paid for? We shouldn't be making that assumption. We should be taxing those parents. Therefore, if they choose not to pay for their kid to go to a pri- a private school they can go to public school. So, you know, I, I choose to think of it that way because it's, it's true. The, the parents don't have to pay. We assume they will, but I mean, just like there's parents who can't afford to, uh, help their kids pay for college. There's going to be parents who are well able enough to that just will choose not to for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And, you know, therefore, you know, they still, those kids still need that option. Cause I mean, if they're getting written out of the will, uh, that early, they're going to need something to fall back on. So they can make a living themselves. Um, but yeah, um, you know, some of the issues that you all have with education, we also have of, but I wanting to know, are, do you guys have like a mass exodus of teachers to neighboring states? Because the neighboring states pay more?
We, um, we definitely have an exodus of teachers. I, I don't know that it's to neighboring states. Jersey does pay well, but obviously the cost of living is much higher than usual. Um, but I will tell you that we have in Pennsylvania seen a sixty-six percent decline in teacher certifications. So there is
How long, oh, for a period of what? Like over the last four years or so?
Over the past several years. I have to look back at the study. I, I can't recall the timeline, but nonetheless, like a sixty-six percent decline is like really alarming. Huge loss of public educators. Um, and you know, like I'll tell you, you know, like in Philly, my, you know, my ex-girlfriend is a teacher in Philadelphia. She went to, um, Penn, got her masters in education. And her starting salary in Philly, um, is something like, I don't know, thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Like it's, it's terrible. Um, for, if, you know, like for a school district as big as Philly, you know, where there's a lot of, you know, like i- it's tough. The class sizes are larger. You know, you've got a lot of like kids that have, you know, like additional issues outside the classroom and teachers and, you know, like teachers are, teachers are more than teachers. A lot of times they're social workers and they're they're playing counselor and they're making, and, and they're also playing caregiver. Like they have many roles to fill and we just don't. I'm sure it's the same, you know, everywhere, obviously. Like we just don't treat teachers with the respect and reverence that they deserve. I know that Tom Wolfe has a bill where he wants to make the average starting wage for teachers forty-five thousand dollars a year. Like no matter what district they're in, that will be the starting set. Um, and, and yeah, like it should be that, uh, like because we do have this huge decline. And so you know, like what happens, you know, three years from now when there's just not enough educators? What do you do? Like you can't have classrooms of ninety kids. Like it's just, that's bad for students.
Hey, hey, Oklahoma's headed there. So I'll let you know how it goes.
Well, I don't think it ends well. Like, you know, like I, thirty kids alone is a lot sometimes. I don't know how you can triple that. So, but yeah, it's we have a mass exodus of teachers. We have, uh, we're having issues just recruiting We have a mass exodus of teachers. We have, uh, we're having issues just recruiting teachers. And. Again, it's part of the reason that we just, we don't, we don't respect educators, you know, we don't treat them with the same reverence that. You know, like other, other countries do and, and so, and other states do. I mean, some states just, they treat teachers well. They have great salaries. They have great benefits and. Um, you know, it's a product of Pennsylvania's education funding that especially urban districts like. They have to scrounge every dollar they can. And often that means, you know, just not offering. Good wages. And so, you know, burnout rate in some districts is really high. Like teachers teach for a year and then they leave. You know, they, they do their one year contract and then they want out. They want to move to another district. They want to move out of state. Uh, you know, take the certification there where it's just, they make more money and they feel like they're, you know, they're better treated and, and better respected. So. It's, it's tough. It's definitely tough here in PA. And I, I have to look at the timeframe, but a sixty six fine is bad.
So do teachers in Pennsylvania have to have a master's degree in order to be certified? Or do they just have to have a bachelor's degree?
Yeah, they just have, normally you can graduate with just your bachelor's and go teach. Um. I think there's a timeline after which they like expect you to get your masters. Uh, but a lot of you, a lot of schools will pay for your masters in Pennsylvania. Um, she had gone for her masters only because she didn't study education as an undergrad, but wanted to be a teacher. So. Um, and a lot, a lot of, that's a pretty common pathway and like a lot of people like study something other than like education as their undergrad and then realize, oh. Would like to teach. And then they go get like a masters in teaching and they take the praxis, which is like our state certification exam. Um, but yeah, you, you don't have to have a masters to start, although like a lot of places are making it like an expectation and. Uh, you know, they, they want people to have that kind of continuing education. And a lot of school districts are good about that. Like they, they will pay for you to get your masters, which is nice. Um, but still like, you know. What good is the masters if like they didn't, you're not, you're still commanding like, you know, you're not getting what you're worth and then, you know, you're struggling to get by. I mean, it's, it's brutal.
Episodes of the Green Corn Rebellion Show are sponsored by Oklahoma Progress Now. Oklahoma Progress Now is a five oh one C four organization focused on building progressive power in Oklahoma. Their primary efforts are on developing progressive content for a twenty first century audience. Coalition and capacity building across progressive organizations and causes. And working to see elected leaders who were more responsive to their constituents and the needs of the many. Areas of focus include progressive messaging and communications, coalition building and resource sharing. And focused progressive policy goals. You can check out their Twitch live streams and they go, uh, live on Facebook on, at noon, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Please support this organization. It's a really great organization. It's just getting started here in Oklahoma. Uh, thank you. Now enjoy the rest of the video. Yeah, cuz in Oklahoma, it's just a bachelor's degree. I know in some states, I think it is, we have to have a master's degree. Uh, so that's why I asked. Cause if you said that the starting pay for a teacher's thirty six thousand, I was like, and they have to have a master's degree? It's insane.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but, um, because, because here in Oklahoma. They raised the teacher, the starting teacher page. I think it's thirty four thousand now.
Okay.
And, um.
Hey, you guys had a huge teacher strike.
Yes, yeah. That's when they raised, uh, that's when the legislature was forced to raise a, um, back in twenty eighteen. And before that, I think it was thirty one thousand or thirty two thousand, I think is what it was. So they only raised it like two or three thousand more, you know, well deserved, still not enough, but you know, it's. Um, it, um. But the teacher pay here in Oklahoma, so like. You know, in Texas, we, we've lost like a lot of teachers to Texas because I think the starting teacher pay in Texas. I want to say it's forty five thousand or something like that, or forty two thousand, somewhere in there. It's definitely forty something thousand. And, yeah, and we've lost a lot of teachers to Texas. They've recruit, they actually, uh, the state of Texas. They do recruiting at like in Oklahoma to get our teachers to go teach there and like, they'll say, oh, like. Do they offer you some sort of benefit to, you know, get you here and whatever, and you'll be paid more on top of that. And it's so insane to me, like we in.
That they're poaching teachers like.
Yeah, and in, I remember I tell people this in the camp, with my campaign that. This is my sixth year out of high school. I substitute teach at the high school that I graduated from. And only eight of the teachers that I had whenever I was in high school still teach there. And I was there all four years. And all eight teachers and not most of the teachers that I had. Uh, retired or, or passed away. They left to another school district or another part of the state so they could get a better opportunity. They left teaching entirely or they left the state. Um, but if we had paid teachers better, you wouldn't have this mass exodus of teachers every other year. And you would have a little bit more stability and I wouldn't be talking to people. Who aren't even a decade younger than me, who have had none of the teachers that I've had. Even though they're close in age to me, because that's just, you know. Insane. And part of building community is you go to some of the same schools in the area and you get to know, you've, you've had the same teachers. Or you've know some of the same teachers because you, they were there whenever you were at that school, but we don't have that anymore, uh, because. Uh, what was that? I remember one of the teachers was telling me last year that. Every year for the last three years of that period, about like twenty some odd teachers were leaving the high school. And that's like out of about sixty or seventy teachers that they have each year. It's like a third. Or like a fourth of these teachers were leaving every year for like three years. And I was like, that's insane. Like you can't. That's, that's wild.
Can have that level of exodus. That's crazy.
Right? Like it, it's, it's a whole thing. And it's, the thing is, is that it might be worse in some areas of the state than others. But in general, this is the thing that most school districts are going through is. They're losing a lot of teachers way quicker than they were expecting and. Barely being able to fill in those spots that year. And then to the extent that they are able to fill in those spots. They don't know if they're going to be able to do that whole thing again, you know, nine months later. So it's like. Insane. And I know that it's like a nationwide thing where people are not wanting to be teachers and stuff like that, but. It, it's, it's a real problem. Like people don't. I feel like people do think about it that they don't understand like what it actually looks like in terms of like a five, six year. Like span of time. It's like.
Oh, it's a real issue. Yeah.
Yeah, um, but yeah, next question, um, you talk about. Housing being a human right on your platform. What are some of the things you're wanting to do in order to make sure pencil, everyone in Pennsylvania and in your district has housing?
Yeah, well, so first thing like I told you about was the whole home repairs thing. So like. I think the first step was like the housing that we do have needs to be quality housing. Uh, so like. Allentown and like a lot of cities, like a lot of the housing stock is old. It's something like. Sixty, seventy percent of our housing stock in Allentown was built before nineteen sixty. So it's a lot of it's older and disrepair. Um, you know, some of it is owned by slumlord that don't take care of it. And so we've got to like get it out of their hands and the hands of like a reputable owner. Maybe like Habitat for Humanity, uh, like, you know, like a local nonprofit or, or get it in owner occupied hands. Uh, but. So one of the things like first and foremost, it's like, before we even build new housing, the housing that does exist like needs to be invested in because. Especially in Allentown, a lot of people still living in homes with lead paint. Uh, you know. A lot of homes, just like I said, poorly insulated, a lot of people spending too much money on utilities, uh, heating and cooling costs. So. That whole home repairs bill is like the first step. Uh, it's just like improving what we have, fixing up what, like what does exist. Um, so that, you know, the people that are living in homes currently are living in quality homes that are good for their health and wellbeing. And then like beyond that is like, I think we just need a massive generational investment in new housing stock. So. Especially in the Lehigh Valley, uh, home prices are, you know, up through the roof. And it's because we're just not building enough to keep up with demand. And especially in cities like Allentown, like our zoning code is like many cities. We're just zoned in a way where it's very difficult to build, you know, sort of dense walkable housing and build enough units so that we keep costs, you know, affordable. Um, so I'm a big believer in like, we have a Penn, we have a Pennsylvania like, uh, like housing, like, like sort of like a trust fund. We call it our financing authority. Um, that provides like assistance to portable housing developers. So we do need. You know, we need a massive like billion dollar investment in building new housing all around the state, um, particularly, especially like, you know, in. Not sprawl, but like dense walkable housing, you know, close to employment, close to businesses. Uh, so that people are like within their community and have access without needing transportation, without needing like an automobile. Um, I'm also a real big believer in like social housing. So I do think we need to make a big investment. In social housing, um, I really like to be an Austria model. I think there's a really great opportunity here. Um, to finance some innovative housing where you actually create mixed income housing. Uh, and cross subsidize that you have, you know, doctors and lawyers living with service workers in the same units. Um, and you know. Cross subsidizing that so that, you know, like people who can afford to pay more, pay more, which enables, you know, working class folks to pay less on their rent. Um, so I really want to try to use some social housing in Pennsylvania, um, to show that it can work. Uh, and then it can coexist with other forms of housing. Uh, so I really want to use the Pennsylvania housing like financing authority to, to try to pioneer a couple of those programs. Um, and try to build some social housing in Allentown and the cities across the state. There are other reps in the legislature who, um. The whole home repairs bill was built, uh, was designed by a state senator, Nikki Gilz-Saval, who's a senator from Philadelphia. Uh, so there's a lot of. Broad support for that bill, a lot of bipartisan support. And then I think there's a lot of support in legislature for just more financing for housing in general. Um, because we just haven't, we have not made that investment in like decades. So. Uh, I just think we need to build a lot more housing, um, you know, like a lot more quality housing, a lot more modern housing, a lot more housing in urban areas. Um, and get away from like, sort of like suburban sprawl and like these, you know, like these massive housing conflict like developments that just eat up like space. And land, uh, but keep pushing people further and further away from like employment and opportunities. Uh, so, so certainly things like that. And then trying to encourage municipalities, um, to, to change their zoning, right? So like we know in a lot of cities, seventy percent of the zoning is single family. Which is a huge artificial barrier to, you know, alleviating that constraint on the housing supply. And so trying to. Um, incentivize or, or compel municipalities to. Not be so stringent on their zoning and like open up their, their communities to, to new residents because ultimately like. The truth is like Philly is growing, Allentown is growing. There are a lot of cities and then metropolitan areas that are growing in Pennsylvania. But the housing stock is not keeping up. And so it's like, we, we want people to move in. We want our area to grow. But on the other hand, we're like, well, we only want to build some, we only really want to build this type of housing. And, and obviously. There's a lot of, you know, connotations and stuff. And we know why a lot of the times, you know, it's, we don't want that type of housing or we don't. That kind of housing will change our community. And it's just all obviously misconception and, and, and fear mongering like. Multi-family housing is very good for cities and the more that we build, the better it will be. Um, but it's about making sure that. You know, like the financing is there to do it because a lot of the times, like especially in Allentown, like we just are at a lack of resources, like. It takes a lot of money to, to build lots of housing stock, especially multi-family housing stock. Uh, like at a not-for-profit level. And so we need to have that investment there, uh, in order to make it happen.
Yeah, um, so tell me about. The campaign finance laws or lack thereof. In, uh, Pennsylvania and what you want to do to. Eliminate the corruption within the campaign finance system in Pennsylvania.
Yeah. So we, uh, PA is like always been referred to as like the Wild West of campaign finance. We just, they're basically no laws governing. How money is raised and what it can really be spent on. Um, there's no gift ban for our legislators. So. As a legislator, you can basically take anything of value from someone and, uh, you know, I mean, then legislators take stuff all the time, like. Not just tickets to sports games, but like ridiculous gifts, like people gift legislators stuff all of the time. Um. Which just should not be. It's weird. I don't understand like running for office to like get things like that. I don't get it. Uh, so like a gift ban would go a long way to like alleviating some of that like messed up and like. Just some of the messed up incentive structure and like, I think a lot of people that use the office for their own personal benefit. Um, the other one is that we just don't have any campaign finance, um, like limitations. So. You can search some finance reports of candidates and you'll see that they've taken, you know, five hundred thousand dollar checks from charter school lobbies. They've taken hundred thousand dollar checks from, you know, certain CEOs or business leaders and I mean.
Like one check, not like within a, a certain time, but like one check.
A five hundred thousand dollar check from, uh, yeah, we. Students First is a major lobbying organization that represents charter schools throughout Pennsylvania. I have seen them give six-figure checks to legislators on both sides of the aisle, Republican and Democrat. Um, so you can imagine like, you know, what, who, you can imagine whose phone call they're taking when the phone rings. Cause a five hundred thousand dollar check definitely buys you access. Like, you know, that, that's, that's, uh, that's money that makes you listen if you're taking it. So. Uh, so that, to me, that's just like disgusting. Like that is the just like perversion of Pennsylvania politics. So. I want to make sure that we impose just campaign contribution limits. Like obviously. We could at least mirror the federal level, like, you know, like no one, no one should be able to give more than twenty nine hundred dollars to a candidate because I, it's just. There's no way that working class folks can have influence when you could just go to six people and they can write you a fifty, sixty thousand dollar checks. And I've. I've seen it happen. I've seen it at the local level. I tried to actually pass. Campaign finance reform in Allentown. So Philly and Pittsburgh actually have local. It's one thing. It's not preempted at the municipal level. Local municipalities have actually passed campaign finance limitations. They mirror, uh, well Pittsburgh's mirrors the federal level. Philly's is actually like. I call it campaign finance reform in name only because the limits are so high that you're like, what's the point? But in Pittsburgh, they just actually mirror the federal level. So it used to be that Pittsburgh, you know, you could write a fifty thousand dollar check to the mayor. And, uh. Now, um, you know, now it's twenty nine hundred dollars, which, uh, I think is a great thing. Like at least it like levels the playing field to some extent and, and reduce. Influence that big money can have. I tried to pass that. Uh, in Allentown, uh, campaign finance reform, but it actually failed. Um, I had three yes votes and four people actually voted against campaign finance reform. Uh, in Allentown. So that, that was a lot of shock and awe for me that I, being against campaign finance forms is like being against clean air and clean water. Like I don't actually understand. If you're against it, like you have to have some nefarious intent. There's no. That would be like, no, I want my drinking water to be polluted. You'd be like, but why? And then you see that they get money from oil companies. So. Like I've never understood, I, I, it took me a while to process that, but it failed. I couldn't get it done in Allentown. Mostly just, I didn't have the fourth vote. But I want to work on that and fight for that in the legislature. I want to pass campaign, um, finance reform. And then the last thing I want to do, um, is do a statewide, um, voter voucher system. So, uh, Seattle currently has a voter voucher system. So basically. The idea is that every registered voter gets four twenty five dollar vouchers that they can redeem to support candidates of their choosing. So there's that variation or you could just do basic public financing, um, that, uh, New York City does for their municipal candidates. So it's like. I think it's for every dollar you raise, the city will match six dollars. So that like sort of amplifies grassroots donations. I'm a, I think either one of them is really great and both are workable. Um. One physically puts money into the hands, um. Uh, one physically puts money in the hands of donors, which I actually like because it empowers people to like, kind of like control. Like, and they may not have the money in the first place. Like obviously if you're a working, if you're a working person, you know. You may not even have twenty five dollars to donate to a campaign. So your donation might not get amplified by that six dollar match. Um, now maybe you have ten or five, but to be honest, a lot of people don't want to contribute to campaigns and I. Don't always blame them. There's a cynicism in politics and there's a sense that, you know, like, what are you really going to get done? You know, everybody. Runs every year and tells me great things are going to happen. Um, so I, I actually like the voucher system because it's like not physically like, you know, their money. Uh, and they're getting to sort of choose how they want to spend it. But I do want to do some sort of public financing of campaigns. At the statewide level for state house and state senate because. The deck is stacked in Pennsylvania as it is in many states because the. There are just some very wealthy and powerful interests in PA that are. They treat municipal elections like arm, they treat local, like state races like arms races. And, and sometimes we can't keep up. We have a billionaire Pennsylvania. Named Jeffrey Yost. He is a, I think he's a hedge fund manager. I don't know what he made his money. I mean, he's worth twelve billion dollars. And because we have like no contribution limits. He, uh, last year was a super vehement anti-masker, anti-local school control, like no. You know, COVID is a hoax, no mask mandates. So he created a pact and he gave, there were some school board races where he sunk thirty thousand dollars into school board candidates. Um, which never happens. Like school board races are like so low key, nobody raises any money. It's usually like. Local parents that have an issue that they're worried about that they run and, you know, you spend two thousand dollars, you buy some palm cards, you buy some yard signs. And you put your name on the ballot. And you put your name on the ballot. Generally, they're not even contested races. Like usually the, as many people run as there are seats open. Jeffrey Yost had this idea, well, hell, I'll spend thirty thousand dollars on these school board races and we'll just flood mailboxes. And it worked. He flipped all these school board seats, a couple here in the Lehigh Valley and elected all of these like anti-masky, answer, anti-COVID, don't get the vaccine people to like local school boards. Uh, and so there's a school district here in Lehigh County, Southern Lehigh that they swept the school board. They won five seats. And they like, they have been so extreme on site, like, and being anti-science, anti-COVID, that the local hospital network that consults with the school district on health issues actually pulled out of their contract. They said like, we literally cannot work with you anymore. Like it is impossible. So that's how bad it's gotten. And that's how much influence that money has in Pennsylvania. Um, and so that's, that's always been like a real big passion of mine is I think like at the, the heart of what's wrong with our system is democracy is just doesn't work and it's, and it's really rigged against people. And we have to actually put in place like the infrastructure to make democracy work for working people. And part of that is making sure that working class candidates, when they raise money from working folks, that money is magnified and amplified so that it can compete with, you know, the, the Jeffrey Yosts and the Comcast's of the world that are always going to have the ability to form PACs and try to influence elections. But we've at least got to balance the scales of making sure that working class candidates can raise money, have that money amplified and win races. Um, they just, we don't have that ability right now. And if we don't, you know, the Jeffrey Yosts of the world keep winning and they keep distorting the political process with real consequence.
Yeah, that's pretty wild. Um, like here in Oklahoma, our campaign finance laws, they match, uh, the federal laws. So to hear that in Pennsylvania, they don't, that's just insane. Like I couldn't imagine.
It's bad.
Like, uh, um, just wow. Um, cause I was about to say like, don't, don't, don't you guys have an ethics commission at the state level that like keeps up with this kind of stuff at all?
Yeah, we have some form of ethics, but it's, it's again, because the laws are so,
Toothless, basically?
Because the law is so non-existent. It's hard to determine like, you know, was it unethical that something took, you know, thirty tickets to the Eagles game? I don't know. Like, like it says it's not illegal.
Yeah, like here in Oklahoma, like it's, we have a lot of wa, like laws having to do with campaigns and campaign finance and, um, it's kind of in, in our ethics commission, they're really good about keeping track of everything and the filings and whatnot. And I would actually say it's, it's kind of ea, like here, because there's so many different laws and particular things of how you have to do it. It's actually kind of easy for you to miss something and get in trouble with the ethics commission. Cause they're really good at what they do and there's a lot of different laws in place like, um, even things that you wouldn't think would be that big of a deal are a big deal. Like if you have something that is, um, what is it? Like certain things have to be phrased a certain way on your campaign stuff in order for you to like not get in trouble or for it to be on a, a campaign official thing. It's a whole bunch of different stuff. Um, but to hear that there, you could pretty much just like, you know, give someone the moon for, uh, like a campaign contribution or whatever. It's pretty insane to me.
Like, yeah, I'm popping, you know, like when somebody gives me a hundred dollars, I feel like, wow, thank you. Like you've really dug deep. And when I see somebody got fifty thousand dollars from one person, I'm like, well, damn, like what?
This can't be good.
What did this guy prom, what did you promise this guy? And like, what did, what did he say when he gave you the money? Cause I mean, that's, I'm making it, I, I mean, fifty thousand dollars is just a little, I mean, I, that, that's a little less than I make a year. I, I, that's in my basically annual salary. And this guy gave him one check. Like it, it makes, it makes my heart hurt. Cause I'm like, I don't understand that one person's way with that much money and just like, like, like so cavalier. Like, yeah, here you go. Here's fifty thousand. And to believe that that does not influence somebody's judgment.
Yeah.
You know,
Specifically in a bad way, not so much in any ambiguous way. Because to me, I feel like I, like personally, even though it's legal to get, well, I think the max contribution is like twenty-nine thousand or not twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine hundred is what we can give. Like I would still feel weird accepting that, even if it's from someone I know or I know why they're giving it to me and it's not like a bad reason. I'd be like, two thousand dollars though? Really? We didn't, like, really? This is what you're giving me? I don't know. I feel weird about this. But fifty thousand, it's like, no, there's definitely something going on there. Uh, yeah. Um, let's see. Um, so my, uh, favorite part of your platform is your part about protecting working families and, uh, unions. Uh, a lot of the stuff that's in that part, part of your platform is also almost copy and paste what's in my part of my platform. That's about workers' rights. Um, so could you talk about, um, some of the things that you're wanting to do for working people? And, um, yeah. And also another thing, tell me about, have you been asked questions about inflation at the doors yet? And what do you usually say to people about that? So yeah, first start with that and then go to the inflation thing. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so working families like, you know, it's, it's, i- i- it's, I think I like basic social safety net stuff. I think it's like where we are shamed by like other industrialized countries. Like, you know, like we're the only industrialized country that doesn't offer paid family leave or paid sick leave. So, you know, like we are wholly inadequate in that sense. And so like, we've got to start like states have got to step up like California, New Jersey, like they have paid family leave programs and they, and they work great. And you know, like all the right wing paranoia about it's bad for business is just BS. Like the businesses in California and Jersey love it. Like turnover goes down, employees are much happier. Like people are healthier. Like it's just insane to me that like these things aren't offered because like, I mean, I view them as like, again, a moral necessity, like whatever, like that, that it's good for businesses and slowly for me. Like I'm glad it works for them. And like, obviously I don't want to hurt businesses. But for me, it's a moral thing. Like the fact that you can get sick on the job and, you know, have appendicitis and lose three weeks worth of pay and maybe not be able to make your mortgage is just like a huge moral failing. Um, you know, like, so I actually, a couple of years ago I had surgery. And I was out of work for about two and a half, two and a half, three weeks. And, uh, you know, we don't have any paid leave policy at the county. So you use your vacation and sick time and I'd only accrued about, I had taken a vacation like a few months earlier. So I'd use some of my vacation time. So I only had about five vacation days. So I used my sick time and vacation time. And the rest of the time that I was recuperating from my surgery was all unpaid time. So there was like two weeks where my paycheck was non-existent. And, you know, like I'm not a, I would say, I'm like, you know, like I don't live paycheck to paycheck, but a couple of paychecks and I start like, I'm going to start to feel it. Like it starts to hurt. Um, you know, so like I had to pinch pennies for the next six months while I rebuilt like, you know, some financial cushion like, uh, so like things like that, uh, are like just paramount to me. Like paid family leave, paid sick leave. Um, protecting the right to organize. We're a state that's like one step away from being right to work. So fortunately, we've always had a governor that's vetoed and protected against it. But the legislator, God forbid, we lose the governor's mansion this year. And there's a possibility we could. And we don't flip the legislator this cycle. The Republicans will write to work this state. They will absolutely pass right to work. Um, which, well, we call, I, we, we starting to coin the phrase right to work for less. That's, that's like, you know, what are like local labor organizations and what we try to like actually market it as. Cause that's really what it comes down to. It's just undercutting people's wages and destroying unions. Um, so like resisting right to work. Uh, the other thing, Pennsylvania only has two parts of the ABC test to determine if you're an independent contractor. So we can actually do a lot to, um, change the way we classify workers in Pennsylvania so that people, more people have the ability to organize and unionize because they'll actually be seen as employees and not independent contractors or consultants. Um, we also actually are one of the worst states in the country for wage theft. And because we've had such like conservative legislators, we've really under invested in our Department of Labor and standards. So there's actually just not enough people to investigate allegations of wage fraud. I think there was a study done by Temple a few years ago where it was something like thirty-two billion dollars or something and wages had been stolen over a period. It's like, it's a lot of money that gets, that gets stolen from Pennsylvania working families pockets. And we don't even have the ability to go after these employers because there's so many complaints and there's so many allegations and we don't have the staff to investigate. So we can't even hold employers accountable for misclassifying and, and basically stealing their employees' wages, uh, which happens quite frequently here in Pennsylvania. Uh, so like, those are things that like, I want to do. One is just build that social safety net. And the other one is make sure that we're holding bad actors accountable. And that people, companies, bosses know that if you abuse your employees, if you steal wages from them, if you don't pay them their minimum wage, if you take their overtime, we will find you and you will be held accountable. Um, and we're going to balance the scales because for too long, you know, CEOs, wealthy companies and, and really management has had the leverage over working families, uh, especially here in Pennsylvania. Um, and that's got to stop. That scale's got to be balanced and companies need to know they're, they're on notice and they're on watch. And that there are going to be penalties and fines for people that abuse working families. Uh, and then as to the inflation thing, oh yeah, I've heard it at the doors. Um, people are one hundred percent angry and, and feeling it. And I try to tell them, like I try to make the argument that we have to like bring down the expenses that are actually like eating into people's costs. Like it is those social safety net things. Like if we, if we had universal childcare, that would save families a lot of money. You know, like it's almost more expensive to put your kid in childcare than it is to send your kid to a four-year university. So I always talk about inflation and like, there are things we could be doing that actually alleviate like the costs that go into the average family's pockets. And it's things like utilities. It's things like childcare, education, paid family leave, paid sick leave. Like those are the things that actually like cost families money. Because there's not like, because it comes out of their pocket, because it's on them to bear the burden. Uh, you know, of, of just living like a life, you know, like the fact that we penalize people for having children. You know, like, hey, you had a kid, you have to, you take, you have to just take the six months. You're not getting paid, you know, like, no wonder people are feeling the crunch. No wonder working families and, you know, like families in this country are like being brutalized because you can't live like that. It's a crucible. It's a pressure cooker. And eventually people reach their end. And I think, you know, this cycle is really that breaking point that things are just getting way too expensive. Uh, I hear a lot with seniors. It goes back to that fair funding formula thing. Because so many school districts are underfunded and property taxes are so high. We have a lot of seniors on fixed income that just can't afford to age in their own homes. And it's heartbreaking. Like I knock on doors of like senior citizens and they are literally like scrimping by, like they are pinching every penny and they are terrified of that next school tax increase because they don't know how they're going to stay in this home that they've lived in for forty-five years. You know, they raised their kids in, you know, a- and no one should have to sell the home that like they raised their family. If that's where you want to live and you want to age, that's, that's great. We should do everything we can to keep people in their home and make sure that they stay where they're comfortable. So like, that's how I address inflation and it is definitely an issue. And if we don't, if we don't get a handle on it, I think it's really going to cost us. Like if we can't talk about how we're going to make things affordable for people, we're going to pay for it at the polls.
Yeah. Um, for me, I haven't been asked about it too much. Mostly I've had friends ask me about it. Uh, cause, cause they'll tease me about it. Cause they're like, oh, that guy in the White House, he's, he's got your letter by his name. Uh, that's not going to be good for you. What are you going to do about that? And, you know, um, but, uh, but for me, it's, uh, you know, they've been talking about how, uh, gas companies and oil companies have been making like record profits. And, um, they've been, you know, especially when it comes to the Uk- Ukraine and Russia thing where, um, well, we decided to stop buying Russian oil, but Russian oil was only a small percentage of the amount of oil that we usually buy anyway. But they decided to say what?
It's like eleven percent of our total.
Yeah, but they decided to still raise the, you know, oil price of oil and the gas prices ended up raising.
Of course.
And, and I, I said to people, like I've said to some people, it's like, okay, so with that specific thing, they're playing on the ignorance of the consumers. Cause they don't, because most people don't know that information. So they just know we stopped buying rush oil from Russia. Therefore they just assume, oh, that's a valid reason for the prices to go up. But no, not really. And then on top of that, um, you know, the price for everything else has been going up, but then we've had these, what is it? These studies coming out saying that companies have made record profits, uh, higher than since what year was it? Nineteen fifty or something like that? I can't remember what it was. But they're making even more money than they were projected to have made this year over the past year. And to me, it's like, it's the inflation issue isn't so much just because companies are raising their prices. It's because the wages aren't going up too. And I've had some people say to me like, oh, well, you want to raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollars. I was like, well, yeah. And then he's, and then so they'll say like, oh, well, some companies have already been raising their wages. But, uh, uh, the prices have still been going up. Isn't that like correlated? It's like, not really. Um, cause I don't think that the price of everything has been going up in accordance to the minimum wage or the wages in some places going up. And also uh, wage, the minimum wage itself specifically hasn't been increased since what, two thousand and nine? Yet rate is almost doubled since then in pretty much every place. The gas prices have definitely gone up since whenever we raised the minimum wage last and the price of everything has, but the minimum wage hasn't. So wages and the prices of everything isn't correlated. So therefore if we want to take control of the inflation issue, at least me, myself as a legislator, it would be to raise wages and make sure that workers are getting better benefits for the labor that they're putting in. Otherwise it's not, there's nothing much we can do. Like what are we, we're, we're not going to, uh, nationalize the oil and gas industry overnight. I, I mean, it's cool conversation to have, but you know, it's not going to happen. But what we can control is or at least, you know, on some level, what we can control is how much people are getting paid at their jobs. And if we do that, raise wages, then people will feel that inflation a little bit less. Since the wage issue was already an issue before the inflation. So seems like, you know, that'd be the first thing that we should be doing.
I agree. It, uh, you know, like wages were going up well before the inflation thing became a problem. Cause there was a, you know, like people were competing for workers, you know? And what's funny to me is a company's always said, like even small businesses, I can't offer fifteen dollars. It'll put me out of business. And now they're, they're offering.
Out of business. Or, or they're, yeah.
They're offering seventeen, eighteen dollars already, or yeah, or, or they went out of business anyway, for some other reason. Like, you know, yeah, it, I, I, it's, it's frustrating. Have you run into the, a couple of people have said to me, I got, I got the, we don't buy oil from Russia anymore. And, you know, you try to explain that it's just not a huge part of our import. Have you got anything about the pipeline? Has, has anyone ever brought up Keystone XL to you? Like,
Not yet. I feel like that's probably the next thing that someone's going to bring up.
Stupid. He killed the pipeline and that would have saved us.
But that wasn't going to be our oil. That was going to be shipped to Canada. We were just going to have some workers here working on it. But other than that, that wasn't going to be our oil. And even if the implication is we would have been able to buy oil from Canada. It's like, okay, well, we can do that now. And I'm pretty sure we probably do already do that maybe. So, uh, yeah. I don't know. Cause to me, I think, I think most people have forgotten about that. Cause I've only heard people bring that up like online and you know, like people online or people online.
Is it, obviously, you know, it would, it would have run directly through. So I was just curious if, if it was an issue like, I'm like, I'm in Pennsylvania. I'm like, we wouldn't even, the pipeline didn't even come through our state. I don't know what you guys are talking about. Like it doesn't even remotely affect us. Um, you know, and again, yeah, the oil would have been, it was really so Canada had a quicker way to get it to port in Mexico and sell it around the world. So like it wasn't even really for us. Like, uh, you try to explain that though, and it's hard. I did have one guy tell me, we, uh, we should not make any more electric vehicles. It's stupid. Um, you know, like because those are expensive and then we'll have to put in charging ports and that's just a waste of time. So, uh, that was, that was probably the most interesting conversation I had. Cause I was trying to explain like, you know, maybe this is a chance for us to start weaning ourselves off, you know, foreign oil sources. Maybe this is a great chance for us to be energy independent and, and renewable energy independent. And, um, that led to like, let's not make electric vehicles. And I was like, okay. And and renewable energy independent and, um, that led to like, let's not make electric vehicles. And I was like, okay. Uh, fair enough. We'll call this one a draw and I had to keep moving.
Well, I, I, I know this kind of doesn't count, but I know this is probably like the attitude of a lot of people in my district. Um, some, I had this, uh, conversation with some students the other day. They're high school students. You know, they're able to at least understand some of this stuff a little bit. So I wasn't like talking to a ten year old. But like, we were talking about, you know, the price of gas and all that. And he also said, they. Two of them were also saying something like, we shouldn't have, uh, we shouldn't be pushing for electric vehicles and stuff like that. And I said. Well, um, in, this is like in a broader conversation we're having about oil and gas and stuff like that. And. The, what I said about, um. So to them, like oil, oh yeah, and they were also downplaying like solar and wind and stuff like that. They were saying it's not good enough. And they were also said it was too expensive to do, which I don't think is quite true anymore, uh, maybe it was true twenty years ago, but. Now it's almost as cheap to, for you as oil, if not cheaper. But either way, I was, but I was saying to them like. Oil is gonna eventually run out, like it might not run out tomorrow or, you know, twenty years from now. But it's not a renewable source. And if you're also telling me that you don't want us to recycle. Plastics and the stuff that we use with oil now. In order for, to make that oil, you know, last a little bit longer, we're gonna have to diversify how we get our energy one way or another. We might as well start now. And they started listing off like, oh, what about coal? Or, uh, what about, um, what was the other thing they said? Something else they said that wasn't renewable. And then I said to them with coal, I said like, well, coal's even more gone than oil is currently. There's like, what? I don't even know how many, um, uh, coal, um, mines there are. Not that many. Say what?
And definitely much worse than oil, like. Fuel we could burn.
Yeah. And so, and I said to them, I was like, I said, event, so what are we gonna, what are you gonna use after coal and oil is gone? Like a hundred years from now or whatever. And this, and one of them said hydroelectric or water is what they said. And I was. And they were being serious. They weren't just like joking. They said water. I was like, okay, we could do that now. And and then I, then I said to them, I said, so you agree? We do eventually, we do need to diversify our energy source, like eventually. Like, we can drill now, we can use oil now, cause it's what we have, but we shouldn't stop that from letting us. Build more electric cars that eventually, uh, uh, they also brought up the, how. Uh, expensive electric cars are to have. It was like, yeah, but also part of that expense is more about accessibility. Because not everywhere, there's a charging station. Now everyone has a charging station at their house. You can't go out in public and use a charging station like you do a gas station. So if we build those things, it'll be more affordable and more of a viable option for people. And they didn't really have a retort to that. And so like in for Oklahoma, this is like a super like oil heavy state. So. The conversation about oil and gas cannot be as simple as, you know, oh, we're done with oil. We can't do that anymore. It's more about, okay, yeah, we have oil, we have to use it, maybe not fracking, but we still have to drill a little. Cause people's jobs, blah, blah, blah. But we need to start talking about other things. And the better part about it is. A lot of our energy in Oklahoma is already coming from wind and solar. Like, I think we're one of the. Top, I can't remember what the percentage of our energy is, but I know we're one of the higher wind producing states. I think, like top ten or somewhere in there. Um, so. I, all I have to do is bring that up to people and say like, hey, like oil and gas is good and all, but. You know, we also have these things that we're already leading in and doing well in. Let's just build upon that and keep going and. Oil and gas will be there, but it's not something that we need to cater to as much going forward because it's not. It's also not a stable market either, because, you know, the people get laid off whenever oil is good. And then whenever oil isn't good, then people will get jobs and it's not even as stable as it could be. You know, which is another argument for nationalization, but we're not there yet. Um, but yeah, um. I, I'm getting ready to have those conversations with people and I look forward to them because I feel like. The, the inflation thing and the oil in Oklahoma, it's all one thing that you're. Not gonna get a lot of people to just simply say, oh, it's time to push renewables. And that's kind of like my, my problem with people. And like, and not so much here in Oklahoma, there's no one saying, I hear in Oklahoma, but in other areas on the coasts. They say, oh, well, Biden with this oil thing, he needs to just start pushing for green energy and stuff. I'm like. There's a lot of people that are not okay with that. Not just because, not just because, uh, you know, they're not for green. Energy renewables. I mean, there could be that, but not necessarily because of that, but because. They can't afford to go get an electric car. They can barely afford to get a regular car now because the price of that's way higher than it should because of inflation. But you need to deal with that and then renewables as well. But don't forefront the conversation about this with renewable energy, cause that's not catching people. People are just gonna get mad at you. But yeah, go ahead. What were you about to say? Sorry.
Right. Like, I think we have to be sensitive to like, the current reliance on, like, that's like, I'm, I'm a big John Fetterman supporter here in Pennsylvania. And I think one of the things he's been able to do is thread that needle of, look, there are a lot of communities that really rely on like traditional sources of energy. And we can't like snap our fingers and make that go away. It's disruptive. It's dangerous. Like, it will just destabilize like. Small towns and little communities that are, you know, needed for jobs, needed for like, you know, investment. Um, and, you know, like, obviously we have to make that long term transition. And I think we can sell it better more as like jobs and American competition and like, put it more in like a national sense, like a nationalism of like, hey, like. We can manufacture, we can make stuff again. Like, right now China is the leading producer of solar panels. You know, it's like, if there's a reason to make solar here, it's like, forget about like the jobs aspect. It's the like, do we want to be the world's leading producer? Of solar? Do we want the world to rely on us once again as the manufacturer of like needed materials? Or do we wanna be dependent on an adversary for like the energy source of the future? Um, cause I agree, like, when you come at someone like, hey, what if we just replaced all your oil jobs with, you know, like, like wind farms? They're like, well, what the hell? Like, that doesn't. That doesn't make any sense. Like, how am I gonna train on that? Like, it's so disruptive and it's incomprehensible. So like. There has to be a just transition. There has to be this like, we are gonna support people and no one's family is gonna suffer and we're gonna make sure that like, everybody has economic stability. And like, this is a long term thing. Like, no, it's not gonna happen tomorrow or next year. But we do have to start making like that transition and like laying the groundwork now. Cause it, it is offensive to like entire states and communities where, you know, resource extraction is, is, you know, the sort of that, the economy. Right? Like, that is a major source of like revenue and, and, you know, it's, it just sounds like, uh. Sometimes like Democrats, liberals, progressives, like, we look like we're talking to people and lecturing people on what they want and not. Right, yeah, yeah, or what they need. And, um. You know, like, people know what they need. Like, people know what they need. They need to do good jobs. They wanna take care of their family. Like, that's what it's about. And like, we have to understand that, you know, like, we can't ask to change that overnight. Um, you know, there needs to be a sense of urgency. Climate change is definitely an existential crisis and it will like wipe the planet out. Um, but how we talk about it and how we message it and deliver it matters because, at the end of the day, I wanna see us transition. Like, we need to be a leading renewable energy producer. We've gotta get off fossil fuels, but it doesn't get done when you divide, you know. Middle America against the coasts because it looks like, you know, like, nobody's made, nobody's doing resource extraction in California. You know, like, we do have a lot of energy. I mean, we're a big fracking state. We're a big natural gas state. Um, you know, so like to tell central Pennsylvania, western Pennsylvania, like, your whole way of life is not just like bad. It's like, gotta go. That's a real winning message, you know, like that is, that's a great. I agree with you. I think you, you have like the definitely your, like, your perspective is the way to go about it.
Yeah, cause, uh, in, cause I was thinking, cause I listen to a lot of shows, like The Majority Report. They're based in New York and whenever they were talking about, cause they were the people who I was hearing talking about. Oh, well, Biden should just start pushing green energy and not even talk about the price of oil or anything. This is how you do this. It's just like, hmm, I don't think so. Uh, I get that y'all live in New York and you have. Good public transportation or at least have public transportation, or you can walk to your job or something of that nature. You don't have to drive or pay for gas on a, you know, weekly basis or sometimes even multiple days a week. So therefore to you, this isn't like an immediate thing. You might look at a gas station and see that the gas is five dollars, but. You're not thinking, oh, that's like an expense that a lot of people, millions of people who don't live near me have to actually think about every week. Or every other day or something like that. So I can understand why their point of view on that is so, let's just go green. That's it. Don't have to even worry about oil, but for other people, it's like, no, I, I drive, um, you know, uh. But yeah, um. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that you agree with me on that. I figured you would because I know Pennsylvania is also a state that was big with. You know, maybe not oil, but I know coal was definitely big in Pennsylvania.
Coal and definitely gas, like that's, we're, we're not much of an oil producer anymore, but natural gas, I mean, that is like, we are a fracking capital.
Same here.
Yeah, you know, and the other thing is like, we're missing a chance, I think, as Democrats to like seize the populist message, like, as we talked to, like. Blame the oil companies, like they're the greedy, like, like go after them, like, let's have a, let's have an exit.
Tax, yeah.
Let's repatriate that back to Gat, like to, to, to folks who pay a lot, yeah, like gas bills right now, like. If there's an enemy to be made, it's the freaking oil companies that are greedy and using international like, you know, instability. As a excuse to raise, cause you know, like oil prices per barrel are dropping now, but I don't see the pumps dropping back down as fast. They're quick prices, but super slow to drop them. So, like, oh, let's, let's, you know, like, if anything, let's go after the oil companies. I have no problem demonizing like, you know, Shell and Exxon and, you know, any other oil company that is making a fortune off tag, like consumers. So like, we're missing. An opportunity to sort of seize that populist message, which I actually think plays everywhere. I think everybody can get behind the idea that there are greedy companies. That don't care about you and me and not worry much about the, you know, hey, North Dakota, have you guys thought about solar? Like. They definitely haven't. Sale industry has been really good for them. So, uh, yeah. It's definitely people like, wow, a lot of Democrats that are from, you know, like New York and LA for. Their version of how the world should change is a little faster and a little, I think. Not necessarily based in the reality of like how Pennsylvanians live, like, cause the other thing is I have a different perspective on. Like, I'm a big believer in hydrogen, actually. Like, I think hydrogen energy has a big future. Um, right now, it's a dirty source of fuel because like you need electrolysis to create it and that's only as clean as the energy that you get it from. So like in the present world, yeah, like hydrogen is very, very dirty fuel source, cause it's likely gonna be coal that you're burning. To create the electricity that allows you to create hydrogen. But if we had a more renewable economy. When you had renewable sources of energy, the hydrogen would be very, very clean. It would be one hundred percent renewable because it would be solar or wind. That created the electricity that created the hydrogen. Um, and there's still a need to transport that hydrogen in pipelines and trucks. So in a lot of ways, you can like limit the disruptive impact on, you know, like. The trucking industry and then even like labor, which, you know, maintenance is a lot of the pipelines. And, and your hydrogen is, you know, the only product is water. Um, even when it moves in a liquefied state, it's, you know, it's, it's not like. Natural gas, which is like super dangerous. And like when it blows up, it'll wipe out like next to it. Hydrogen is a much safer fuel source to transport. Um, you know, like, it's still explosive, but it's not. Like, it's a quick, it, it's a quick kind of burst of like gas and energy, but it's not gonna be like somebody set a bomb off. Like, if a natural gas pipeline explodes. That's like dropping a small bomb in the area, like it wipes out everything. Um, but like, you know, like, I do think that we have to look at those perspectives because, you know, the reality is like. A lot of states frac or have some form of energy production and they're integral to their economy, integral to their workforce and. You know, like, we have to, I think, get outside of like our, our bubble of like, we can only do wind, solar and, you know, and, and like, and that's it. Those are like the sources of energy and like everything else is off the table. You know, like, there are other renewable energy sources that we have to be willing to like examine and entertain. You know, like France gets seventy percent of its energy from nuclear, you know, and like, we have to have those conversations about like. You know, like nuclear is a good transit source. Uh, you know, it may not be permanent, it may not be our own, like forever. But like, while we're trying to build, uh, you know, a, a, a carbon free economy, like nuclear at least is carbon free. Um, you know, like, we have to be responsible with how we manage it and maintenance it, but, you know, like, we let all of our nuclear power plants in Pennsylvania, like. We stopped maintaining and upgrading them. And so they're all shutting down. And unfortunately, that means that they're gonna be replaced with coal or natural gas. And those definitely dirty fuel sources, whereas like, you know, like nuclear, like, yes, there's the byproduct of, you know, like the nuclear waste, but. While you're burning it, like, those are carbon neutral sources of energy, like, they're not putting, you know, they're not putting out methane into the atmosphere. Methane is worse than freaking CO2. It's thirty three times more effective at retaining. Sunlight. So if you're talking about warming the planet, anything that puts natural gas into the market, when you could otherwise avoid it, is super bad for us.
Yeah, yeah, um. That's interesting conversation. Um. So, yeah, um, so last question I have here is. What kind of music do you listen to or who are your favorite music artists?
Who, let's see, I. Right now, I, I, I really like this band called Kaleo. They're Icelandic rock band. Um, their music is in English, but they're actually performing in Philly in April. I'm gonna try to stop and see their concert. Uh, but I definitely like, like classic rock, um, a little bit of alternative, a little bit of indie. Uh, like, so, I mean, I grew up listening to like, The Rolling Stones, The Beatles, a little bit of crooning. I like, like Dean Martin, Frank Sinatra. Um, you know, like, I, I like, uh, you know, like Bobby Darin. So like, I, I have a weird eclectic mixture. And then I like, you know, like light R and B. Like, um, you know, like the weekend, like, you know, like, I, I, I have a whole. You look at my Spotify, it's super weird. Like, it's, it wouldn't make any sense. You would definitely think that like somebody was just making random playlists. Um. But a little bit of other things, you know, it depends on the mood, like, I'm working out, like, it's definitely a lot of hard rock. Um, you know, driving music, I have my driving playlists. So, uh, but I definitely like, like indie rock. Like classic rock, like that's kinda where I, that's what I'm usually like listening to.
All right, all right. That's cool.
Do you like Breaking Benjamin?
You do?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, they were like, when I was in high school, Breaking Benjamin was definitely like, you know, like. I had, there's, you know, like, definitely, definitely nostalgia there.
Yeah, um, you're about my age. What are you? You're twenty eight now, right? Yeah, I just turned twenty four. Um, the first time I ever felt old was when I was working. A couple of years ago, this is when I was turned, I was twenty one, cause it's twenty nineteen. And a kid told me that I was working with, he was in high school, he was a junior. And he told me that, uh, he mostly only listens to old bands and he listed Breaking Benjamin. As one of the bands he listens to, as well as Chevelle. And I was like, oh no, you didn't just say that, did you? And it blew, it, it like took me back for like a week or two, cause I was just like, there's no way that kid just said that to me. He said, Breaking Benjamin's old and Chevelle and Slipknot. And I was like, no. I, I think I'm gonna have to call in sick the rest of the week. Someone just called me old without trying to call me old. Um, where's my social security? Where's my Medicare?
Yeah, I coached debate in my spare time. I'm a volunteer debate coach. So like, it's, it's high school kids. So. You know, like your first two years out, you're like, ah, I'm still young. These kids are like, you know, like, the seniors are like two years younger than me, like whatever, I'm in college, but. You know, like, I'm twenty nine, I'm twenty eight and like, I'm coaching kids that are, you know, like fourteen, fifteen years old and. When they refer to like Green Day or like, you know, like, uh, like as back day, I'm like, oh my gosh, like.
Yeah, or, uh, Lincoln Park. Like, I'm, I'm sitting here saying to myself, like, no, that's like the earliest stuff I heard on the radio as a kid. You can't call that old.
Old, you know, like I remember like watching the first Transformers movie, you know, like, and the Lincoln Park cover, what I waited for, like.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Don't get old now. Like twenty eight is young. I don't wanna hear it. Like, don't make it older than I am.
Yeah. And uh, oh no, the funnier part is when kids tell me they don't know who Linkin Park is. And the first time that happened, I thought the kids were playing a joke on me. I legit didn't think that they were, I thought they were kidding. But I've, I've had, yeah. And then I've had other kids tell me they didn't know who Linkin Park was. And then I start saying, oh, they, they did some songs for the Transformer movies. Then I remember the Transformer movies were like out when they were like babies or when they were like barely born. And I was like, oh, never mind, never mind. You're not even gonna know what I'm talking about. You don't know what Transformer movies I'm talking about.
You know, they'll never know.
Yeah, it's, eh, but no, that's, it's funny. Cause I started substitute teaching when I was twenty one, almost twenty two, cause it was right at the, at the end of, or right before the pandemic started. And then the pandemic started, then there was like a whole six months where I was in the classroom and then started back. And I was like twenty two and a half. And I was pretty much at the high school every day or every other day. And that's when I started to realize how old I actually had become. I was like, oh no, this is, this is not good for me. But yeah, um, but uh, um, thank you for coming on. Um, where can we find you on social media and what is your campaign website?
Uh, so my camp website, my campaign website is uh, www.bookjoshseagull.com. Um, and then you can follow me both on Instagram and Twitter. I'm a seagull for progress. So.
Alrighty, everyone should go follow him and donate to him. Don't give him fifty thousand dollars for one donation. If any, if anyone is listening to me and they're able to do that for him, you have to at least write me a thousand dollar check. Okay? Like geez, don't, don't give him all the money. Okay? No, I'm kidding.